The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktibahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
Bear with me a second. Yes, they're on the rapaz. Again, Mr. Mayor and Board, the following items for your consideration for movement to a consent agenda. Roman numeral nine on the second page, F, nine, F. Then on the next page, nine, H, H. Then ten, A, one and two. But on the number one, I was at the airport commission when the motion was made. The motion was made for, to request authorization for any of the airport board members and Rodney Lincoln to attend, though there was a lot of discussion that this would probably end up just being one and Rodney Lincoln. But the actual motion was to allow any to attend this in-state professional meeting. So I make that change to this title on the agenda and then add that to consent. Then ten, B, items two and three. Ten, C, item one. Ten, D, item one. Ten, E, all six items. Ten, F, item one. And those are the items recommended for your consideration for consent agenda. Any other board member got to say that they'd like to take anything off or add anything else to consent? Do we have a motion for approval of the official agenda with the consent items?
Move approval, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a second?
Second.
If we have a motion as second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. This brings us down to an executive session. This is at the beginning of the board meeting and we will, this is pertaining to land acquisition. Do I have a motion that we move into closed session to discuss going into executive session? Oh, Mr. Mayor and Board, I would move that the board enter closed session to determine whether or not to go into executive session and that for the convenience of the audience, you remain here in your seats and the board will move itself to the conference room. And, Mr. Mayor, who was making the report?
They're...
Are they here?
Yes, they are, they're in conference room.
And of course, would include anyone else on that buildings committee that is present to join us in executive session. Okay. We have a motion move into closed session to discuss this. All those, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. We're now in closed session to discuss this. Let's just move. And we will move at this time, y'all stay where y'all, into, across... Let's not move yet, let's just do it here and then move, because we're gonna have to move and come back and move again. Oh, well, boundaries as it relates to potential development of city buildings and I think that, and the acquisition of land therefore, and I think that's certainly an item for an executive session. So would you move that we go? And I would move that we move to executive session to discuss that specific item. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion with a second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
So please be seated, we'll be... Our next item is the approval of the minutes of the city of Starkville Board of regular process meeting on March the 20th. Have all of you had opportunity to look at the minutes?
Mr. Mayor, move approval of the minutes of regular process meeting on March 20th, 2007.
Second.
We have a motion with a second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Comment by the mayor and the board of all of them, I'll keep my comments very close and we'll move on to citizens' comments at this time. This is a time in which citizens who may have comments can come before the board and make a comment about the city or the running of the city. Alvin, are we having any sturge you tonight?
No.
You're not gonna make a comment?
He's waking up.
God, we couldn't have a commute when Alvin was making a comment.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. My name is Alvin Turner, Ward Seven. The citizens just have two things that is concerned to them. We really need bus stops for the public transit. Last Friday was frightening. But we really need those bus stops for the safety of us all. Citizens kind of concerned about people thinking that they have money and want to surprise them and that they just want to, hope that they don't have to take knives in their own hand. That's two concerns of citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Any other citizens at this time would like to make a comment? Thank you. We now have public appearances. The first is Mrs. McArthur. How are you this evening?
I'm well, thank you, I hope you are.
We are, I am.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Edith McArthur. I represent Starkville Cemetery Association, Ogden's Own University. For the past several years, the city and the association have shared the financial burden of resurfacing streets in the cemetery. We are down to the end of this project. We have five short streets that remain to be resurfaced. Bill Webb has given me an estimate of $12,000 for this work, which will make all of the streets reasonably newly resurfaced in the cemetery. I request authorization for this repaving and I ask that you participate, the city participate with the cemetery association in the financial aspect of this, evenly participate. $6,000 from the city and $6,000 from the cemetery association. Thank you for your consideration of this.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Corrigan, you're in your ward, isn't he?
It is, and I think y'all do an excellent job in there and I would be more than glad to move that we approve the expenditure of $6,000 to go towards the paving of streets in Ogden's Cemetery.
Oh, according to be taken from the cemetery fund, Alvin Cox says there is sufficient funds in that fund.
Correct, let me amend that to include taken from the cemetery fund.
My pleasure, to second your motion. We have a motion, a second. All of you have heard the motion, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Give your payment. The second presentation is a request by the Council of Community Organizations for the city of Starkville to participate in advertising the benefits offered. Is someone here to speak? How are you this evening?
Fine, thank you, great.
You'll tell us who you are, please, sir?
Yes, yes, my name is James Little and I am a member of the Board of Directors for the Council of Community Organization of Oktibahaw County. We are located at 1408 Highway 182 East in Starkville and COCO is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization. First, I would like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to appear before you this evening. COCO was organized in the early 1980s and have been in continuous operation providing space for organizational activities, community programs, and extended cool school curricula programs. Every other year, the COCO organization hosts an awards program when we honor all those who have supported the organization through the past two years. It is also a time when we solicit ads for our souvenir booklet. It is also a time when we issue special invitations for you to come and be a part of this celebration. We hope that you will purchase the back cover of the centerfold, our full-page ad for this year's booklet. However, whatever you purchase will be graciously appreciated. This year's celebration will be Saturday, June the 2nd, 2007, at 7:00 p.m. Including the booklet I have for you. It speaks about our mission, our objectives, and membership application. More information can be obtained by contacting at our website. Please note that we sincerely appreciate all your support for the previous years. Again, thank you for allowing me to appear before this council today. Then questions, I think I will.
You have questions this time from many of the board members? Did you say you had a booklet for us?
Yes, I do have a booklet I can leave before the council.
Mr. Mayor and Board, I would move consistent with the last advertising resources and opportunities of the city of Starkville, as we did with one of the pageants most recently, would move approval of a half-page ad.
Second.
We have a motion to approve a half-page ad. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Britt, are you here?
Yes, sir.
I thought you were back, there you are, I thought I saw you.
I was hiding back here.
You were hiding, I couldn't see.
How are you, Mayor?
Fine, Jim.
Good evening, everyone. How are you all today? I appreciate you taking time to see me a few minutes tonight, kind of bringing up speed on some emergency management projects and we've been busy upgrading our statewide mutual aid compact. What this does is allow us the opportunity to request assistance if we have an emergency or disaster that far exceeds our local capacity to deal with it, or we can offer assistance to other areas of the state, such as we did during Hurricane Katrina. We've done it on a number of occasions with various jurisdictions. What this statewide mutual aid compact does is outline the list of resources available from our local governments for deployment to other areas of the state and during a state or federal declaration, it also provides for the accountability and the necessary avenue for us to either be reimbursed for our equipment and services or have the federal government offer the disaster assistance to pay when we request services. In order to make sure that everybody in the state of Mississippi and actually the United States is on the same page with this, if we should respond to another jurisdiction or another jurisdiction responds here to assist us, we have brought our basic plan into guidelines with the comprehensive plan of the state of Mississippi and the national response plan for the United States as part of that. And also, I think pretty much all of our agencies here have been trained in the national incident management system, which outlines the proper areas and responsibilities and roles during the response. So everybody's working off the same page. Basically, what we're trying to do now is upgrade the resources available. It's been about four years, five years since they were updated. I know that we have locally added new equipment and retired old equipment and would ask that that be upgraded. So what I'm asking you to do now, comes for your consideration, I ask you to approve the upgrade of the statewide mutual aid compact that we participate in.
Okay. Do we have any questions for any of the councilmen? All of you had an opportunity to see the statewide mutual compact agreement.
Do you need us to actually authorize a new SMAC agreement or is it just to update?
We're still operating under the old agreement, we're just updating our resources and make sure that we're in alignment with the overall state and federal plan.
Government.
There's nothing changed since the start, it's the agreement other than updating the resources.
Do we actually?
Go.
Do you want a motion to authorize the mayor and staff to update? So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion for the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have to say, I appreciate the support that this board and everything has shown in the past disasters and hopefully that support will be there when we have our next one.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor's business. Have you, I would be sure that all of you have turned in your names, would like to get this committee started this week if we can. Ms. Seth, I think you gave your name.
I did.
And Mr. Perkins, you gave your name. Richard, we're waiting on your name. And...
Can I withdraw?
No, you can't do that. That, I think Clyde's the only one I know of gets along with Richard at this point. Okay, but this is our cleanup response and if you would get your names in, please give them to Ms. Tindall, we'll get this committee on the road. The second item on here is consideration of adoption of a policy to offer appropriate refreshments to committees, boards, and commissions. It's been traditional with the city, Ms. Outlaw Lynn, did you want to talk about this?
Well, I wanted to be available since I was one...
Okay.
Question that you put on the agenda.
And we have a couple of opinions here. I do not think that in the past, if I remember many years ago, that was this issue came up over coffee, this is back when you were the chief administrator. And I think that upon your investigation, that the attorney general's office indicated that it was fine to do this, is that right?
Yes, in the packets, you have two attorney general opinions that discuss coffee refreshment, soda, water, and one discusses eatables. So either one might be offered and my, this came up as a part of the municipal building advisory committee, there was a question there and I did a little research. I was planning on providing that and then getting reimbursed and was told that that was not the policy of the city. And so I thought it might be appropriate, if we were going to do that, that we have a policy in hand so that we can say, yes, we do, or no, we don't. And so I thought I would put that in front of the board and let them make some sort of formal statement of their wishes.
Yeah, request for a policy, that's correct.
We only have, well, I listed it in here, we have the standing committees that might be impacted, the elections committee doesn't meet very often, obviously, the board meets regularly and that would impact the board. Planning and zoning is the other one and in the board of adjustments and appeals, all the others are offsite and sort of have their own resources. So it's not a large number of people, but municipal advisory is a temporary committee that might be, they were meeting certainly, I think, no longer than 90 days and they were meeting every two weeks.
Why don't you make a suggestion, we have an advisory committee set by the mayor and then we study this, come back out with...
Well, let's just take it under advisement.
Let's just take it under advisement.
The mayor can come up with an advisory committee if he'd like to study this.
We have a...
Did I understand you to say an advisory committee to study whether we would have...
No, 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 he didn't say, he says take it under advisement and the mayor take it under advisement, we just...
I move we take it under advisement, Ms. Seth, the mayor was talking about an advisory committee.
Okay.
I'll get any more water from there.
No, we don't have any water, anything out here.
I'll bring my own water.
You gonna bring in the rest of us?
No.
We're gonna take that under advisement, it ranges down to board business.
We didn't vote on that thing, anybody?
No, we didn't.
Or second, or anything?
No. We have a motion, do we take this under advisement with a second, all those in favor say aye. All those nay.
Nay.
Nay, I think we should just...
That was two nays and five ayes. Board business, report from Clearwater Consulting regarding the reclaiming of the two things, how you doing, Mike?
Just fine, Mayor, how are you?
I'm doing well.
Mr. Mayor, members of the...
You felt better after I got your report.
Right. Members of the board, we, some time ago, were charged with the task of sampling the two lagoons that were abandoned in 1981 and developing a closure plan for those lagoons. And that sampling has been completed and the requisite tests have been performed and the closure plan has been prepared and submitted to the Department of Environmental Quality. What was found is, as you might expect, after 27 years or so of not being used, the lagoons are suitable for a greenfield-type closure. There were no indications of any significant pollutants left in the lagoons, nor is there much in the way of any sediment in the lagoons, something along the order of about a half of an inch or so. The closure plan that was submitted to the Department of Environmental Quality for their approval would result in a, in a greenfield closure, in other words, the use of the land would be completely unrestricted in the future. And we were, we were not tasked with evaluating the cost of that closure, but depending on just how far you wanted to take it, as a ballpark, I would say the cost of the closure could range anywhere from a low of $20,000 to $30,000 to a high of $150,000, depending upon how completely you return the land to its original lines and grades. And with that, I will pause and entertain any questions you might have.
Questions from any of the board members, it comprises of approximately 15 acres, is that correct?
That is, is water surface area. One of the properties, I think, is around, is in excess of 30 acres total.
Really? Is that the one out west?
The Trim Kane. And I attempted to get the acreage, the land acreage for the lagoon off Pat Station Road before the meeting, but the county's record system was, we couldn't access the record system to get that acreage. But I would say in the range of 20-plus acres in that or in that range.
Having a gentleman in the back, back here agreeing with you, approximately 20 acres. Thank you for your report.
Thank you, Mayor.
The board knows where we stand in regard to those lagoons at this time. Watkins Ward.
Infrastructure.
Keith Howar, you all right?
I'm doing good, Mayor. I'll get him after. Tax season, the end is inside and audit season, the end is inside also.
Oh, come back on me, I'm just trying to ignore y'all, yeah.
Well, that's the reason I have that surprised look on my face. I brought Jim Henry with me tonight so that we can kind of double team on y'all for a few minutes. Most of you should have a copy of this ever-growing document. We have now reached a total of 61 pages in the city audit report, which is considered progress as we add to it. What we're gonna do for the next few minutes, we're not gonna drag you through 61 pages. I'm gonna touch on the reports themselves for just a couple of minutes, the actual opinions. Jim Henry then is going to touch on some financial numbers with you and then if anybody has any specific questions, we'll try to speak to them. I would call your attention on what is actually page number two, which is always where we like to start. This is the independent auditor's report. If you read this two-page opinion, you will find that the important thing is that we say in here, and this is in the fourth paragraph, that in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, and each major fund for the city of Starkville on September the 30th. In layman's language, that's what we always kind of refer to as a clean opinion. I would then ask you to turn all the way back to page 50. And in the back of the report, in keeping with generally accepted governmental auditing standards, there are certain other tests and procedures that we are required to do. The first one of these is we have to issue a report on your compliance and on internal control over financial reporting and we actually test for compliance with certain laws, regulations, contracts, grants, non-compliance of which would have a material effect on the financial statements. We found no instances of non-compliance during the course of our auditing or in any of the tests that we've performed. We also, with regards to internal control, we have to look at the internal control and make a limited evaluation with regards to the workings of the internal control system, which is, if you will, it's our accounting system. We found no conditions there that were considered material weaknesses. On page 654, we have a report on specifically the compliance with the requirements applicable to each of our major federal programs. Major federal programs are defined as any federal-funded program that we spend more than $300,000 from. We found the city in compliance in all material respects with the requirements that we tested on all of our major federal programs. On page 57, we are also now required, and you may recall that in September or October each year, you adopt a municipal compliance questionnaire. We're actually required to audit that questionnaire. This is to look specifically at compliance with state law, to look at state purchasing statutes, all of the various other statutes that apply to municipalities. We perform tests on those areas and we found no instances of non-compliance with state laws and regulations. Finally, on page 59, you will find a nice little nine-bullet summary of everything I basically just told you. The summary is, we express an unqualified opinion on the financial statements, the audit did not disclose any material weaknesses in internal control, there were no instances of non-compliance of a material nature to the financial statements, we did not disclose any material weaknesses in internal control, we expressed an unqualified opinion on all federal programs, on all major federal programs. And the city of Starkville, Mississippi was actually determined to be a low-risk audit tee. And that covers all of the audit reports. I would call your attention to the last page, page 61, the total expenditures of federal awards during the year ended September 30, 2006, $3,309,896 of federal monies that we expended and that we properly accounted for and administered. And now I'm gonna let Jim take just a minute and walk you through some of the numbers in the financial statements.
All right, well, I wanted to go over all 61 pages in detail, but Keith told me they tried that one year and it didn't go over so well.
I got the hammer.
So just a couple of highlights. First, I want to point out this is the first full year that the city, that the pooled accounts the city decided to do in fiscal year 2005 to increase the interest income. That is the first full, full year of that, it was part of the year 2005, but fiscal year 2006 was the first full year. And if you look on page 35, you'll see that the interest income in 2006 was $206,000 and that's up. that's up from $58,000 in 2005. Now, keep in mind, 2005 probably would have been lower, but part of the year it did have the pooled accounts. So, just from 2005 to 2006 was a $150,000 increase in interest income, which is obviously very good. Now, if you look on page 40, you'll see that the excess... If you look on page 40, you'll see that the excess of expenses over revenues were $141,000, which doesn't sound good, but you have to remember that $459,000 of that was capital outlays. And as you probably know, governmental entities are now required to report under GASB34. GASB34 was an attempt to make governmental entity account reports look more like a company's audit reports, basically to try and give the casual reader of a governmental entity audit report a better understanding of what's going on in the government itself. And when you look at it under GASB34 perspective, which takes capital outlays and capital expenditures and capitalizes them, and then depreciates them over time, and it also, you don't expense principal, you only expense interest payments, much like a company does. And when you look at it from that perspective, in the governmental activities, which the governmental activities includes everything except for the proprietary funds and star of electric equipment included in that, or fiduciary funds, the governmental activities had an increase in net assets of $1.4 million. So, again, that's obviously very good. And then finally, if you look on page six, you'll see the long-term liabilities in the governmental account reduced from fiscal year 2005 of $4.3 million. In 2005 to 2006, the total long-term liabilities in the governmental funds was $3.2 million, which means that the long-term liability is reduced by over $1 million, which, again, is very good. So, from our auditor's perspective, it was a very clean audit, and I'd say the city's in good financial health.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept their audit unless they have questions? Okay. Thank you.
No, you do need a motion.
We do.
The state auditor requires that you acknowledge...
Oh, I had something. It was on you.
Yeah. You need a motion.
We need a motion.
I move that we accept the audit report from Watkins Ward and Stafford for the fiscal report, fiscal year ended September 30, 2006.
Second. Have a motion to second that we accept the report. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, board. We appreciate the relationship.
This brings us to that I skipped over the infrastructure committee for a report.
Mr. Mayor and board, the infrastructure committee met recently and will do so again, continuing its discussion of the proposed street and drainage projects that will be initiated very, very soon. You will recall that we will get bids, I believe, on the 11th for the installed quantities for street improvements and so forth. I spoke briefly with the city engineer this afternoon, who said he stands ready and willing to talk with each of us as necessary about specific items and projects in our wards, so would encourage everybody to continue to work on their list of projects and consulting the city engineer as necessary and appropriate. And after we get bids on the 11th, we should be able to move with some of the street projects. He says, he, the city engineer, says that the drainage projects pretty much gonna have to be taken on a case-by-case basis for some type of bid or proposal procedure. So, he says, please contact him at our convenience to talk about the particular projects we're interested in. Remember, with the $200,000 allocation to the seven, each, to each of the seven wards.
Then they go ahead and put their priorities on.
Yeah, and that's what we're talking about, Mayor. So, go ahead and complete your priorities that you have been working on, so we can move forward with some of this, hopefully, in the beginning at the next board meeting.
Anybody got questions?
In the intention would be on the drainage side, that we'd be able to go ahead and put out bids on drainage projects at the next meeting, so that we can move forward with those.
Right. Thank you for your report. My next item is consideration of acceptance, the best bid to offer credit card services and as recommended by the technology committee. And I think, Richard, this is your committee, isn't it?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay.
What we had asked for before was to seek bids from any of the interested approved banks in the city for the purpose of accepting credit card payments in the city, because we often have, as Martina can attest to, a lot of people that come by that want to be able to pay for various things in City Hall by credit card. And so, we received those proposals, and the committee, the tech committee, hasn't looked at these proposals since they've been received, so I wondered if Ms. Howar, if you could share any thoughts on that.
We did send the letters out to the banks, local banks. Kayden's declined proposals, and as well did Murchison's followers. We did get Regions and Bank First, and I just kind of did a comparison with Regions and Bank First. And it appears that Bank First would have the best rate on, I guess it was out of 11 items, Bank First had the best rate on 10 of them, with Bank First charging a training fee of $50 that Regions would not charge. So, and based on that information, I would recommend that the board authorize negotiations for a contract with Bank First for the city's credit card service provider.
Now, what you're seeking now is acceptance of that, but you haven't, have you worked out yet to...
No, we would have to negotiate with them, a contract, with the various, the fees would be the same here, but terms and conditions would be...
Talking about rent paid for... About one fee. No, this would be Visa MasterCard, the whole...
Visa MasterCard. Well, it's Visa MasterCard Discover. American Express, they say, was slightly higher. And that's what, that would be something the contract would entail.
Any other board members have questions?
We just give a quick review again, Richard, about why the person who wants to pay by credit card will be paying the fee, what our thoughts are right now, what that standard fee would be if someone wanted to pay by credit card.
Well, as it is by now with state law, we're not allowed to essentially eat the associated fee that goes with using a credit card.
That's correct.
So, the idea was to give people the option of using a credit card if they would like to, but to do that, they would have to pay an additional, I think, $1 or $2 fee.
Well, it would be a convenience fee, and just depending on, with the percentage rate that they, that they give us on, with Bank First is 1.62 percent plus 23 cent per item, and Regions is 1.85 percent plus 20 cent per item. And based on, with the court using 150, their tickets normally run around $150, $155, based on that, Regions would be right at $3. Bank First is slightly lower at $2.66. So, we would have to come up with a convenience fee that would cover, you know, those fees.
Convenience fees, that's not uncommon sometimes for that to be done even in Merk Attila.
Right.
Unless there are any additional questions, and I would approve acceptance of the bid from Bank First and authorize the city to enter negotiations.
Richard has made us a motion to we accept Bank First credit card services.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. This brings us down to the adoption of a resolution directing the sale of a ward of general obligation public improvement notes, series 2007, the city of Starkville, Mississippi, to be dated and delivered thereof in the principal amount of $915,000. And I believe we are required by law to...
And I think that's me, too. I opened bids this afternoon, and the Hancock Bank was 4.10 percent, and Trustmark Bank was 3.98 percent. Talked with Randy Wall, our bond counsel, and he's recommending that we reject those bids and for the board, that the board would authorize negotiations with Trustmark, because the bid was nonconforming. And he said that is allowed in section 311925 of the Mississippi Code. And what it's gonna do is allow Trustmark to bring their bid into conformance.
Mr. Mayor and board, I would move that the city adopt an order rejecting the bids received from Trustmark, excuse me, Hancock Bank relative to the sale of $915,000 in general obligation public improvement notes, and pursuant to state law, that the city, through its bond counsel and other appropriate individuals, enter into negotiation with Trustmark National Bank to come up with a proposal that conforms to all the requirements of state law.
Second.
Motion with a second. Want to repeat that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. The item F is consent. Item G, discussion involving out-of-town travel by department heads.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Perkins.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I move the adoption of an amended travel approval policy for city employees as follows. Number one, preapproval by the board of aldermen is required for all out-of-state travel by elected officials or municipal employees, regardless of the length of the travel. Number two, preapproval by the board of aldermen is required for all overnight travel by municipal employees, in-state or out-of-state. Three, in the event of an emergency situation where it is impossible to secure the preapproval of the board of aldermen for overnight in-state travel, and any such situation should be extremely rare, such travel may be approved by the mayor pro tempore. If any such emergency travel approval is granted, the board of aldermen should be notified that such has occurred. It should be remembered that the board of aldermen must consider approval of payment or reimbursement for any travel expenses on the city's claim docket. Four, the mayor, in the case of employees at the department head level or with department head status, and the department heads, in the case of departmental employees, are authorized to approve in-state travel involving travel that does not extend overnight. And finally, number five, the mayor is authorized to travel in-state as conducted by his official duties required, and often in form of a motion.
Do we have any, do we have a second to that motion?
Mr. Vice Mayor, may I recommend just one little clarification here?
Yes, sir.
And I think, and make a, make a comment here. It appears that this is the basic existing travel approval policy of the city, with the exception of approval of in-state travel that extends overnight.
Yes, sir.
And also, I would note that some of the restrictions on the mayor's travel have been removed in this, this particular proposal. The, the one thing I would add, just for clarification, in number three, the third line, "Such travel may be approved by the mayor or in his absence or unavailability." I would add that, the mayor pro tempore.
Yes, sir. That's good.
Just by way of clarification, if that is acceptable.
Very good, because the gentleman from four had asked me about that, and that's, you know, I explained to him I couldn't do it unless the mayor was out. But that's a good clarifying. Thank you, gentlemen.
So, it's the mayor pro tempore acting in his normal capacity as mayor if the mayor is, is...
Yes, sir.
Miss finance.
And I would be happy to second your motion.
Yes, sir.
With those corrections, I believe, and he's a rebel to those changes.
He said so.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just one question. Have we had any problems or abuses within state travel where we might need to change the policy?
Mr. Mayor, this amendment is offered because it provides more fiscal accountability since in-state multi-day travel can cost hundreds of dollars.
Did you hear his explanation, Richard, down there?
Yes, sir. I just, I think the department heads are capable of handling this. So, I will most likely not be voting in favor of this motion.
Alvin Coria, and of course, a vote, however you think appropriate on this, it seems to me that, and Alvin Perkins, I am speaking for you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate my words. You do a good job. Thank you, gentlemen. Yes, sir.
But it, it seems like if the board has taken the position that out-of-state travel must be approved, and generally, generally, that's because that's the more costly type of travel. But we find that you also have a situation result where a overnight trip to Tuscaloosa for whatever, and why anybody would want to go there, I don't know, might cost significantly less than a four-day trip to the Gulf Coast that is in-state. And so, I just hear Alvin Perkins suggesting that for a little bit more fiscal control and accountability, it might be better to take a look at this.
Any other discussion?
Well, the departments are still limited by the funds within their travel line items, so, and we approve that, so I see us as already having that degree of oversight.
Certainly, we approve that, but do not know all the trips that might come up, that might be necessary and appropriate for department people, heads, or others to travel.
I would like to ask, in my capacity as an alderman, I would like to take a moment and ask if any of the department heads have any comments on this? And it's certainly within my purview to ask that if I would choose to.
I'm laughing. I don't see anybody raising her hand over there.
You have included in your packet some information that Chief Lindley gathered, and then I have some information, you just regarding the number of trips that have been taken over the last, that the mayor has had to do trips for three years, basically, for companies associated with particular...
Mr. Mayor, I would call the question.
You heard the motion, you heard the second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay, we'll move on. Officer, the city clerk, claims docket. Airport's consent, both items under airport of consent. Also, item H, code enforcement, position, field enforcement, all that is consent. We're down to the claims docket, and that is not consent.
Let me ask one question. I overlooked something as to the April 2, 2007 claims docket. That in my packet?
Yes, it should have been on the, that second amended.
I'm talking, what was it? I'm trying, was it in my packet, April the 2nd? Where was I to get it from?
Out of this, it was in your, it was in your box.
I don't check my box for the board.
Oh, okay. That, that claim is in the airport property that we're paying, making the final payment on, and it was done, it was for April 1st, for $16,773, 12.
Any other questions about the claims docket?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to be able to see the claims docket before we vote on it.
Well, it's in your box. Go on there and get it.
Well, it's not my responsibility to stop and look in that box. If I'm to vote on something, I shouldn't have to be told that the table's in my box. If we're to consider this, it should be mailed to us or made sure we were given this in a time of the matter. And no disrespect, I'm pointing to the city clerk, but this applies to any department head. But the board can go ahead and take the vote, and somebody will come and tell you another.
Mayor and board, aye. Having reviewed the claims docket and checked my box, we're motion, motion approval of the claims docket of April 2nd, 2007, with the addition.
Second.
We have a motion with a second.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to end up voting against the claims docket, but I think for the first time since I've been here, but not because of the expenses that we're authorizing, I also reviewed the claims docket, and as you know, Marquita won't have any questions, I contact you, and it seems like I do that weekly. My problem, as I was looking through it, is it seemed like there's an increasing amount of expenditures that are not being done locally. And that's a concern that I have, and I'll have an opportunity to share with the board as we go forward, that I think it's good business, and it's certainly good policy, that we direct our purchases wherever and whenever we can locally, and to even get to a nit point, a nitpicking point, we bought eight dollars in office tax across town, and I worry sometimes, that we worry, that we think we may save fifty cents on a, on a box of office tax, when we literally can walk to multiple locations from City Hall and buy those, and that's really more of a policy side of this. But I just see too many out-of-state or out-of-town or not-local businesses on the claims docket, and I think we have a responsibility to buy locally. We're encouraging the citizens to do that, and we should be doing the same thing. And that's not you, Marquita, it's just what I see reflected in the claims docket.
We have a motion and a second that we approve the claims docket. All those in favor of approving the claims docket, raise your hand, please. All those opposed?
Ms. Mayor, may I say something at this time regarding the claim docket? I'm listening to what Alderman Cox said, and I respect that. And when we have something that we can point out as our reason for saying no, we aren't going to pay our bills, and it's not going to make Ms. Outlaw look bad, because she's not responsible for the bills, we are. But when we have a reason to say no to the claims docket, then I think we should state that. I think it's only fair that we say why we are voting no on the claims docket, because if you see something that you think is wrong, and she can't answer you satisfactorily, then you should bring it to the table, and we all should know what it is, because maybe I overlooked it. So with that said, I would request of my colleagues that when you vote no on the claims docket, if you would point out the specifics as to why you're voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The electric department is consent, personnel is all consent, public services, item one is consent, that brings us down at the wastewater treatment plant, consent item, that was the DEQ report, I believe. We're now for a request authorized for the city attorney to commence eminent domain procedures, Doug. I think there were about three the other night.
Yes, sir. First of all, I want to express my appreciation and admiration to some people in this process for getting, getting these easements. John Young, who has been a big help, and my assistant Jenny Hughes, and then also the wonderful people out in the Rock Hill community, that we've all had an opportunity to meet and interact with. They're great people out there, and they want this project, and it's, I've been really amazed at how well this process is going. As of Friday, we had twenty-four signed easements out of the thirty-five we needed. One previous eminent domain was approved by the, by the board, and then three here, so, and then the rest of them have made commitments to, to get these things signed within the next, before the next board meeting. So I just wanted to let you know about that. The three parcels that listed on my cover sheet in the packet are, through Jenny's research at the courthouse, appears that these particular properties are intestate, meaning the deed holder has died without a will, and wanted to see if the board would approve the city attorney going ahead and doing the research at the courthouse, and number one, determine if these properties are indeed intestate, and then if so, give him authorization to commence with eminent domain proceedings on these properties.
Do we have a motion that we proceed with eminent domain?
Oh, Mr. Mayor and Board.
His presence is on record, no, he's going to do that.
Well, he did it last time.
I would move that the city of Starkville proceed with the necessary eminent domain of the remaining and appropriate parcels in the Rock Hill Utility Improvement Project. The city of Starkville South shall suffer irreparable harm and delay by exercising the right to condemn these properties, and eminent domain proceedings are necessary to claim immediate right of possession of the property pursuant to sections eleven twenty-seven eighty-one through eleven twenty-seven eighty-nine of the Mississippi Code of nineteen seventy-two, as I mentioned.
Also the necessary appraisals and everything?
Accompanying this would be the approval of any necessary surveys and appraisals required to complete the orderly eminent domain process.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us down to executive session. Yeah, let's, let's go to, let's go ahead and have the break. Let me, let's hear a motion that we're going to close session, so we can turn and go to executive session, and then we'll take a break. Can we do that? You making a motion? Did you second the motion? We have a motion and a second that we go to close session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, we've gone to close session.